Visit with you as part of today's huddle about several things, but we want to talk a little bit about what we've rolled out to the office holders and department heads and then also later after that, what we rolled out to the public, but we thought it would be a good idea to visit about it here at the huddle. And that is our campus plan, the updated campus plan. So as you can see, with the slide that is up now, I guess that's up here, yes. That is what the proposed new lobby would look like in the parking lot of the judicial courts facility. And we'll kind of get into the meat of it here, but essentially, I want to point out that it was a very creative idea that came to us from an employee for reuse of the jail. And that jail cannot be used for very much because it's precast concrete. We thought about storage, we thought about what would have brought the bulldoze it. But we were sitting in a meeting and someone said, you know, that's about the same size as a courtroom. And so that is the purpose or the intended purpose of the jail building, which we'll get into the details here, but that new lobby that you see would connect the two buildings. And where do I point this thing over?
Down, yeah, down arrow.
Okay. So the important thing here is a lot of space is being vacated by the sheriff's office. We've removed the temporary evidence storage that's going out to the new jail site. The basement level of the public safety center, there was a space in there that was being utilized by the sheriff's office, as well as the first level of the judicial courts facility where the sheriff's office was located. And we'll get into during the presentation, we'll get into what that space is going to be utilized for. The justice facility, which is number nine, I believe that that's the symbol of the lines are going to be nine is the temporary jail. So that's actually being broken down now. The justice facility is the jail and the third level of the historic court here, which is where civil is. So quite a few spaces that are being opened up as a result of sheriff's office and jail being moved to the site. So our summary and analysis includes what we've done to this point. We've met with office holders and department heads. Actually, the architect did analysis, met with all of those involved, get the spaces and reviewed the budget for us to come up with some of our objectives, which we'll talk more about. We definitely want to get that west parking lot. That is very important to us because, you know, before we had this one cleared over here, I would park over there occasionally. And it's very hard to even see where the parking spaces just kind of make it up. So we know that that's a need. We want to meet the needs of the office holders and the department heads and efficiently utilize space. We want to consolidate as many offices onto the campus as possible. But the bottom line is, we've got to meet the so looking at that essentially that $19 million that you have staff down on to make this come together. So I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Russell.
Thank you.
He'll talk about this section.
Morning, everyone. Well, one of the really important things to keep in mind as we go through this is to meet the objectives that Bob just talked about. We really looked at every single viable option that we got there, but really top of mind the whole time was efficiency and keeping taxpayer dollars wise. And that's efficiency for you all as the Green County team members. That's efficiency for the citizens that may be coming in to seek services. That's efficiency for the taxpayers that are going to be paying for these improvements. So we really had to hone in on various options that would reduce the amount of new build that we had to do that would utilize the existing structures. And we really wanted to start to reduce the really using way too much space. So that brings us to reducing lease space from the county commission for the 10th floor. This would move the county commission from the 10th floor of the Cox Towers, as well as the public information office to the second floor of the historic courthouse. As you can see here, that it would be going into the space that is currently occupied by information services. IT would then move to the basement level of the public safety center. This would be a pretty seamless move for them. They already occupy some space in this building, but would also provide a tremendous extra layer of security, many extra layers of security for that very important information technology equipment that is housed there. So it'd be moving a lot of that from the second floor of historic to the very secure, nearly tornado proof. The third floor of historic courthouse, the resource management department would take up a small amount of space that is if it was occupied by the sheriff department. I believe that space has already been with protected, that space has already been moved into. And it was really just a matter of moving some desks and chairs. Purchasing would also move into a space that is currently occupied by the human resources department. HR would then move to the first floor of the administration building that this is currently occupied by GCYAA. We believe this would be a really wise move because sometimes people maybe need to go to HR for stuff, but not want to be seen coming in and out of the HR on the second floor. So this is still very accessible, but offers another layer of security and privacy for those that need to go to HR for whatever it is. Budget would then move to the second floor of of that building, give them a little bit more space, but still be very accessible to all of us on campus that need to work with the budget on a yearly basis.
All right, I'm up. This is a little bit like coming back from college on a three day weekend and you're the first speech of the of the day. Bear with me. The the everybody calls it the old jail. I mean, call it the former jail. It sounds like a silver dollar city. So anyway, the former jail, you can see in the lower right corner, the youth academy, they will have a private entrance in and out. The juvenile administration will be on the left and then they will have juvenile courts on that area. So that's how we're going to use the first floor of the old jail strictly for juvenile. Second floor, we'll have juvenile detention area, courts. We can have up to, we will have, was it two courtrooms and a possible third one in the future in the second level of the old jail. And then in the judicial courts facility where the sheriff was vacated, his office in that area will be courts, which had been in the public administration, the area you see for a public administrator, we had several small courtrooms there that are just not functional. They're just, we're going to shift over to where the sheriff was at, which opens up state the space for the public administrator, which really helps them because they'll have that secure entry that you see. When you saw the picture of the secure entry, and maybe we'll get through that, I'll show you. You can see right there where it says secure lobby just in front of the Green County Judicial Center and the jail, you can enter either one coming through that area, which right now we've kind of got a bottleneck, as you know, as you try to get in ports, really awkward and not easy to get into. This will be and there's the picture. I think there are a few more photos. Okay, here we go. That's one of the courts buildings in the former jail.
Skylights work out nice in those pods.
And then there's the GCYAA entry. If you walked in that area now, that is the main entry to these. And that is the secure entry. When you come in, you can go one direction to the current courthouse or other directions. What we have coming and we hope you guys are, you have any questions? We'd be happy to answer those. We're guessing about three years, start to finish. The next phase is details with the architect. This was concept. So we now go into the detail phase and it's going to be a little bit different than how we did the jail because we honestly got really lucky with the jail. We got everything locked in before we started seeing the price increases and the supply chain issues and the workforce seeped into economy. And we're anxious to see what we get back from the one we've got to stay into that 19 million mark. Everything that has been indicated so far is we can do that. There's a logical flow in construction, what has to happen first and then second and in those orders. We need to vacate one space to create space for another and that sort of thing. So right now with the architect, we're trying to, out of that 19 million, how much needs to be assigned to each of these areas? That way we know when we start phase one, we've got to stay within that budget. Otherwise, we could go through the first three phases and have spent all of our money. So we need to prepare and know how much do we have for section one, phase one, and then phase two, and then so on. And we determine really within about three years, all of the moving parts will but obviously we can't move, can't move the purchasing into HR until HR moves. HR can't move over to this other building until we get juvenile in. So you can kind of see how things have to fall into place and we work on that logically. Yes.
Same as if we're going to save.
Great question. I was just going to talk about that. So our rent is about $107,000 per board per year. So we will still have four floors up there, two for the prosecutor and one for child support. But the state reimburses us for that floor. If we were to move it onto our campus, I don't believe that they would pay that. I will tell you that this has been a real process getting to this solution. And we explored a lot of avenues that really didn't work out. One avenue we looked at was purchasing the old Boyd School, which is about a block or two east of here. And the reason was we thought that it might be a viable solution for juvenile. And we had meeting, we had a meeting with the neighborhood and with juvenile, and we looked at that as a possibility because that is one of the big needs. The juvenile building is in bad disrepair. But the cost and the expense of getting that old school up to par after we looked at it was really just cost prohibitive. It would be like $3 million.
Over $3 million.
Yeah. By the time we put a roof on it, a tuck pointing in and fix the flooding problem in the first which was viable. So had that worked out, we would have had more space available to do something else. I don't know if we would have moved another facility out of the Cox Tower, but we we possibly could have brought the public defender onto the campus. And the public defender is located on the south side of Chestnut in a building that is, it's on Robertson. It's a block east of Boonville. But that building, the state pays the salary of the public defender, but we pay their rent, which is about $97,000. And that was one possible permutation of all of this. Just didn't look out with with that as a cost over there at Boyd's here. So this turned out to be a better option. But $100,000 a floor is significant. It's not enough to fund and, you know, bond it out, but it will help. And it will help getting, as Rusty pointed out, the public administrator
We've seen some of the folks that, yeah, we've heard some of them.
Well, to be honest, we're excited about getting back into this building. It's really hard to stay close, as close as we would like to speak to you when we're over there. We were, we were assigned those offices when we, but we're excited about getting back. That will help.
Just to kind of put the project into perspective, we're looking at roughly a $19 million project that we were considering. If we were to build a new building, it would have been $80 million. And honestly, the inflation of the changes going on, if you're better at structure than I am, but I would guess probably a $100 million project or more. So that got eliminated pretty quickly. It just would not have been an efficient use of taxpayer funds, nor could we afford it even if we
And we're faced, supply chain issues and inflation are going to keep our material costs high. I do know that in some areas of construction, things are starting to take a dip. So the, I think we can maybe pick up some savings with construction labor. Yeah, Bill?
Three years. So two blocks terrible repair. What's the plan for got to tell you, we've got rain in our courtroom and talks. And every time we reach out, some I know the plans for that is to knock it down.
One of the first
Just take it down.
One of the first moving pieces is juvenile. That's the one we, not just because of what you just told us, but really for things to begin to fit into place, that's one of the first that we have to do. So you'll be at the front end and nothing and you've got wet spots on the floor. You got a dog out. It doesn't make a lot of sense to put a ton of money into the building, working bulldozes, but we've got to, we've got to maintain that as a good public space. We like to count that. I think the Rusty's point, you know, the sooner we can get that space renovated for you all, the better.
So what do you all think of the plan?
Not again? Okay.
Thumbs up?
Well, and we show blued out blocked areas. So the architect will be getting with you to determine what goes in those spaces and work out those details. So you still have a lot of decisions to make and a lot of say, those of you that are going to be moving. That's, that's one of the first, first steps.
Think on the public administrator, how many times a day and how many people we have running to probate to the officer board. First of all, that's going to be a great
And the security, I thought about that several times. I remember one day where I went out in the hall and called the sheriff on somebody's beat. It was, it was so disruptive, but you all deal with that. And we're not in that room. So let's talk about security a little bit in general. We've talked about that at the office holders meeting. But what's, what are some of your thoughts about this building? Well, I think we all agree with that. But what, what specifically? I mean, there's a, there's a range of what that looks like. And it might not be conducive to your operations if it was to go to the full spectrum of what it could be. We've had ideas presented all the way and including up to and including locking out certain exits or entrances, which would be an inconvenience for some, I believe. But what, what is it we want to achieve and how? Yes, I'll just throw that out.
Yes. I think the main concern would be public, it's like to like for his office. And we've had some interesting people. When civil was upstairs, we told campus security, but there, you know, buildings down there. So I'd run upstairs and, you know, have a heart attack. I'd go up there and say, hey, you know, these guys are second on that. They're like, they're out. By the time they get down there for the third floor, then this guy's third floor. So around to go. And by the time they follow this guy outside, he steps off the street, they can't touch him. By that time, security enters because everything happens in the first ring. Or just even dirty like we have it. I think to the public being aware that they can see it. They know when they come to our building. It's that presence. It's metal detectors, you know. There's times we'll have the building he was here on. He has, he asks for to have something at the first Yeah.
Let me say, if we say metal detector, we're detecting our own selves.
I think what a lot of people that work in the building want to have the confidence to know is that everybody in the building is I walked out of our mapping office, go down to our processor office, and there was a gentleman that was bringing out the water pump. And he did not have business in the building. He was panhandling in the basement, told to get just been discharged from Cox Tower and was told, just figure out how to get back to everybody. That's going to be, and all of a sudden I'm walking down, got to enter a code to get into my door. And he doesn't see me in a code. So I've been interacting. I didn't hear for physical harm, but it was a very uncomfortable situation. Those happen more than we've been reporting. So I'm sure everyone in this room that works in this building has had some type of a and limiting access, having points of interest injuries that for whoever's coming into the building has to do, say, yeah, I grew up, I gotta get away or for my thing. Just something to verify that they if that's what we have to look at people and service, you have to meet me here or are they just
Yes.
So more than just inside.
Secondly, I would like to say this, people like security, you won't have
I would just state that we have lower security in our building than this building.
There's the average, most of them know that you need to work on I'm a sheriff, it's way different, not separate from you. So just think about what you would want in this.
I'll tell you, we're looking and we are thinking outside the box. Love to have an armed uniformed officer in this building. But we also know that the county jail is a short 60 of those people and it's trying desperately to hire them with online commercials, really going above and beyond trying to hire those folks. So we can't even fully secure the jail. It's hard to get one move down here full time. So, you know, we may be looking at private security is not at the level I'd like to see, but maybe, maybe what we end up with for now. Hiring is a real problem. That's why we wanted to just toss it out, get some, get some thoughts. I, I really liked the variety of hearing because Rusty's right, we're going to have to think outside the box. You know, we could, how many have been down to Christian County? One entrance. Go to that extreme. We just have to know that number one, we can't even find people to do it for a company. But everything that goes with that for that, that's kind of the challenge. And then how do we, how do we pay for it? We've got to figure that out. So I've almost used up all the time, but anything else? Anybody wants to add on that? Anything else? Yes.
You have employee type entrances where you're bad, which you rent. And the only people that come in that are the people that have business with not for the employee necessarily.
More of our departments I know late our department does several departments do, but a very A lot of our employees do now.
I always have mine on me, but I don't wear it. It's in my pocket. I have to scan it to get into the, into the office. Okay. Is there anything else that we address this morning? We've got three minutes left.
Do you have a question from somebody virtual? They're asking, it's Robin from over at PSC. She's just wondering if there are any plans to block off the IS department from that EOC floor that they're going to be kind of operating on?
I don't know that the conceptual plan goes into that tail, but we can certainly present that to the architect. Let's go back to that. There we go. So just for clarification, the lower part of the screen there is already occupied by IT. The one on the right hand side is where the sheriff's office currently is. Space. And then the top of the building there, which would be, if I'm not mistaken, the west side of that facility. That was never built out for another purpose. It's kind of storage area. So I'm not familiar enough with the building to know where that would be blocked off. It may be an elevator issue. But we can certainly present that to the architect and see because, you know, that, that would also be a security issue.
Yeah, these are some of the design details that are really anticipated in this next phase.
Yeah. The one on the west side is fairly big. Again, this is just conceptual. So she has measured square footage.
It'd be a good time to mention too, a lot of what we presented today is really, were you all's ideas. I know Jennifer met with each and every one of you, where your ideas, your thoughts, what your needs might be. And that's really what went in.
I don't know that we've really prioritized that as much as some of the other things. The space is available, so it could happen at any point. But the only thing that that would move up is us moving out of its power, which happened in time. I think some of the other things. Well, the key to this is to work out all of the details of the entire plan, get a budget together for each section. Otherwise, we could start just moving over there, realize we've overspent from the start and we can't finish the other thing that we need to do, so. It's critical that we get those numbers nailed down first. It also makes sense from the standpoint that this is the most secure building on campus, so in the event of a tornado of some sort of a disaster. Like what may have happened, what did happen to Jock or somebody, something like that, this building would be secure. So our IT equipment and our IT controls would all be secure and safe, which is one of the first things we need to get back up and running.
Along those lines, we've also been, and I'm, I think I'm actually over time now. We've also been really exploring additional security just in the IT field, not. Say, but things like multi pack, multi factor authentication, some additional security. To protect us in cyberspace, all of you. Protect all of you, so. All right, well, I hope it was a good discussion, thank you all for the input on everything, including the security, we'll take that to heart. As we work on a lot of the challenges that face us. Anything else you guys want to add?
No, appreciate your attention today.